So we're here, so we will call to order the meeting of the Greenwood Common Council on Monday, August the 3rd, 2020. And I've asked Mr. Bates if he would open our meeting in prayer this evening.
Let's pray. Dear Lord, thank you for the cooler weather and the rain of recent days. Thank you for watching over us during these challenging times. We ask that you would continue to be with our leadership from the White House, Congress, and the Supreme Court. Be with the governors of our states, give them wisdom and understanding during this time of pandemic. Thank you also for protecting our first responders across our nation, here in our city. Be with our mayor and his administration, and councilors as we work together for the benefit of our citizens. And we ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Bates. Roll call.
Bates?
Present.
Campbell?
Here.
Dine?
Here.
Then?
Here.
Hill?
Here.
Hopper?
Here.
Lexi?
Here.
Pendleton?
Here.
Williams?
Here.
We do have a quorum. All of you should have received copies of the minutes from our last regular meeting of July the 20th. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Lexi, second by Mr. Dine, was that correct?
Yes.
All right. Any additions, deletions, or corrections? Seeing none in roll call on the minutes.
Bates?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Dine?
Aye.
Gibson?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Hopper?
Aye.
Lexi?
Aye.
Pendleton?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Minutes are approved on a vote of nine to zero. Reports, Corporation Council.
The item semi-monthly and also the litigation report were posted on SharePoint. And if you have any questions about those, please contact me and let me know.
Are they going to control it at this time?
Yes, the financials will be ready and sent out prior to the next meeting. Since today was the first day of August, we haven't closed out July yet. Also, the audit of our comprehensive financial report is complete. It is available on the city's website on the Finance Department page.
Congratulations for a good report again from the State Board of Accounts.
Thank you very much.
Any other committee or board reports? Hearing none, then this is a time where we set aside for members of the audience who would like to address the council concerning items that are on the agenda. So if you're here this evening and would like to speak to the council about something on the agenda, we'll give you an opportunity to speak up now. There is a five-minute time limit on individuals and a 20-minute time limit on groups. So, anyone? All right. Hearing none. Then we'll move on to ordinances and resolutions. First reading, Resolution 2013.
Hi, resolution of the Greenwood Common Council to adopt the written fiscal plan for the annexation of approximately 38.97 acres located north of Tracy Road between Honey Creek Road and County Road 125 West, referencing annexation ordinance number 2018, sponsored by Dine.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Bates, I believe, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hill.
Yeah.
Yeah, all right. I thought that's who it was. Any discussion? Mr. Prime, would you like to say something at this time? Or do you want to wait and speak later?
I'll defer to ordinance 20-18.
All right. Right, any discussion on the council on the Resolution 2013? Any questions?
Aye, Dad.
All right. Seeing none, then roll call, Resolution 2013, first reading.
Bates?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Dine?
Aye.
Gibson?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Hopper?
Aye.
Lexi?
Nay.
Pendleton?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Resolution 2013 passes, first reading seven to two. Resolution 2014.
The resolution of the Greenwood Common Council to adopt the written fiscal plan for the annexation of approximately 60.33 acres located north of Tracy Road between Honey Creek Road and County Road 125 West, referencing annexation ordinance number 2019, sponsored by Dine.
All right, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Hill, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Pendleton. Any discussion, Resolution 2014? Roll call, Resolution 2014, first reading.
Campbell?
Aye.
Dine?
Nay.
Gibson?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Hopper?
Aye.
Lexi?
Nay.
Pendleton?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Bates?
Aye.
Resolution 2014 passes, first reading seven to two. Ordinance 2018.
An ordinance annex in certain territory contiguous to the city of Greenwood, Indiana, placing it within the corporate boundaries and making it part of the city of Greenwood and re-deploying the corporate boundaries of the city of Greenwood, Indiana to include approximately 38.97 acres located north of Tracy Road between Honey Creek Road and County Road 125 West, commonly known as the class of property annexation, sponsored by Dine.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Hill, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Gibson. This is scheduled for a public hearing, so we will at this time open it up for a public hearing. Anybody wishing to speak for or against ordinance 2018, please speak up.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes. You need to state your name and address for the record.
All right, my name is Alan Mathena. My address is 6072 North 125 West Whiteland.
All right, go ahead.
Okay. Living on County Road 125 West, our family has had a home there and has farmed there for over 40 years. We've also been farming some of the fields around the area that surround this, this particular proposed subdivision. As a farmer, the concern with a new subdivision usually involves drainage and traffic issues. Tiles that drain the fields that, that run through the particular subdivision that's being proposed. Oftentimes when subdivisions get built, the tiles become damaged, and it may be years down the road before the damage is noticed. Therefore, we have a concern because that problem continues to cause problems for the farmer. And over the next several years, the farmer either has to deal with that or has to get it fixed, usually at his or her own expense. Our next concern is the traffic. As residents that live on 125 West, we have the side of the proposed subdivision with the highest density, which I believe was R3, and that will be putting more cars onto a narrow county road that already has an abundance of traffic. It's been said that these small lots are geared towards empty nesters and retirees. However, there's no guarantee that these will be the ones that will actually be living there. Any family can buy a home in the proposed neighborhood, and if there are multiple drivers in the family, this will add even more traffic. We realize that a subdivision will probably eventually happen. We just hope that you decide. It needs to be one with a lower density, and the number of vehicles coming from the subdivision can be handled safely by the surrounding roads. So we ask that your vote be no for the proposed subdivision. And I don't know if that matters, whether this one's the one on 125 West or Honey Creek Road, but we would ask especially those that live on 125 West not to approve a R3 subdivision there, as well as not to approve the, I believe, R2 subdivision on, on Honey Creek Road. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, this is Linda Sargent. I live at 1247 Stone Ridge Court, and I'm, my neighborhood faces Honey Creek Road. I emailed a packet of information to the council members last Friday. I'm assuming all of you received that and hope you've had an opportunity to review it. And I want to echo what Mr. Mathena also has said. I provided pictures in the materials that reflect the existing structures that are there. Also, I provided a picture that is a very common sight of the traffic there on Tracy Road, at least twice a day, trying to get onto Honey Creek. I'm here with neighbors of mine, and we're very concerned about the traffic. Honey, Honey Creek Road is a two-lane country road, and it was built up, I think, last year, maybe the year before. In some places, it is three and four feet drop off the road. There's no shoulder, and in bad weather, there is nowhere to go. The reflecting alerts that are on the side of the road, excuse me, have been knocked down or bent, and it's already dangerous. It will need a lot of repair. If we put 500, minimum 500 more cars on that road, this road simply cannot maintain safely that traffic. We're also concerned about the density of the proposed plan from Arbor Homes. We're also concerned about the quality that Arbor Home plans to build. And we are asking you, we were here back November 2018, opposing the project by Lennar Homes. From everything we've received, the product that Arbor Homes wants to place there is not even as good as what the council already turned down, proposed from Lennar Homes. And so we are asking you once again to please not allow this project. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, just a minute, please.
My name is David Bunch. I live on the property immediately south of the proposed subdivision. We are against the subdivision simply from the standpoint of the new roads being built, and the, the amount of traffic that's flowing on the new road is, is dangerous now. We have problems getting out of our driveway. We have problems getting into our driveway because of people coming up behind us. As we pull out onto the road, people that's exceeding the speed limit, almost double the speed limit, they, you know, they, they push us, they pass us, and things like that. It's just a danger at this point. I don't know if, if it's in the plans to rebuild the new road that's there, but to handle the traffic that, that will result, it, it would almost have to be. Otherwise, there will be some, some severe accidents on this road. Another thing is, is we have six acres of woods as a part of our property, and we do hunt and shoot guns on these woods. I don't know what, what is being done to protect the potential residents that move into these homes. We don't plan on stopping doing that unless we're told to, but that's really a taking of our land, and, and that's one of the reasons we bought that property, is to be able to hunt. So because of these things, we, we are against this. One last thing is the Whiteland School system. We know that there's been multiple elementary schools being built to accommodate the, the number of residents in the Whiteland School system, but we've not heard anything about the high school. And all of these children will end up in the high school at some point, and the high school cannot handle that type of, of growth that they have. At least, that's what it appears at this time. So I'd like to have it on record that we are against the subdivision.
All right, thank you. Anyone else?
I'm going to speak in favor, but if we want to let any other remonstrators go first, that's fine.
All right. Anyone else? Yes.
Hi, we are Matt and Amy Doertie, and we are the current owners of our party question on 125. We wanted to introduce ourselves. My husband's family has farmed since 1853, and we are true, you know, we take care of what we have, and farming is important to us. However, we purchased this piece of ground as an investment piece at a public auction.
That everybody could have came.
Yeah, that anyone that's concerned about some of these issues could have came to bid on this piece of property. We bought this piece of property so that we could grow our farm in the future, and that time has came. We also bought this piece of property knowing that there was already subdivisions, there was already schools, that type of thing, knowing that one day it truly would be developed.
And the fact that it's being developed as the over 55 community really helps the school system because they're gaining the tax dollars without kids. They've got all kinds of positives here.
And might I add that not one custom home builder has ever contacted the realtor or us interested in developing or pursuing any type of custom home build there. That has never happened.
And Lennar's numbers were smaller than Arbor's, so I think that needed to be made clear, too. Arbor is actually at a higher area than what Lennar was that you guys turned down recently.
I understand the concern of traffic. We didn't used to have any traffic on our road, and now we have to be cautious on our own road. I think that's all over Johnson County, and I think that's something that should have been addressed and stopped long ago. But now the development is there.
And when it gets developed, that will bring the tax down.
So we vote yes. We hope you guys will take into consideration our thoughts, and we thank you for considering it.
All right, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak for or against?
Yes, please. This is Mike Veenheisen. I live at 2925 South Honey Creek Road. It is located just north of the proposed annexation and rezoning proposal you're considering this evening. And I have concerns about the current proposal and would speak unfavorably towards a positive decision. This area is a lot, a large lot residential area. If you visit the area, you, as the other neighbors have pointed out, this is large lot residential. The proposal is not consistent with the current land use, even in development. Majority of it is agricultural and single-family home, residentially zoned in Johnson County, on what you would call in Greenwood, large lot residential. It indicates in the proposal that it is consistent with the comprehensive plan. My opinion, the only part that's consistent with that is that Greenwood has decided that should be developed for residential. But I believe it's not Greenwood's intent to use that as a medium-density residential area. And this is one of the, you know, prime areas or last areas that Greenwood may have to incorporate into the city. And to make a decision to set the bar too low on what residential development is proposed there, I think is, would be a mistake. It appears that this discourages development of executive-type homes, single-family homes. As you see in the proposal, it is a fairly, you know, medium to moderate density, and that's not consistent with what's in the area. I believe, well, we heard the proposal at the Plan Commission that no variances are going to be requested for this. And that, I believe, the petitioner, when they say that, but I believe the zoning, which has been also noted in your staff report, is not consistent with the area. And in effect, the zoning request is a variance to Greenwood's development standards. The zoning requests are going to set a standard that's not consistent with that area. And for that reason, in addition to many others, I think the council needs to give serious consideration to whether they approve this decision. And then in the financial report, in the report generated, it appears that Greenwood has already stretched on services and infrastructure. And this is a key and important part. We've heard about the roads. We've heard about the drainage. I think before a decision is made, the city of Greenwood needs to seriously consider, you know, what is their plan and what is the infrastructure to support responsible and development in Greenwood. And so for these concerns, I would ask that the Greenwood Common Council agree with your Area Plan Commission's vote, which you'll noted is, was eight to one unfavorable recommendation, and nine to one unfavorable recommendation for this proposal, and would vote this down at tonight's meeting.
Aduh. Thank you. All right, anyone else wishing to speak at this time?
Okay, I guess I'll jump in.
All right, Mr. Prime, go ahead.
For the record, Eric Prime, Van Vayler Law Firm on behalf of the Doertie and Christian families and the proposed developer Arbor Homes through their Silverthorn Homes and Destination divisions. We're going to flip real quick to the overview. I know, I think everybody has a pretty good handle on the area that we're talking about, but it's the four parcels with the red dots that we're discussing. The Doerties own the larger parcel to the east. The Christian family owns the three parcels on the west side with a, a small area carved out that's owned by an individual. Next slide gives you a little bit closer view of the Christian property. This is the area that it bought's Honey Creek Road. It's approximately 38.97 acres, and we are requesting for this section now, after the Plan Commission meeting that the gentleman just prior to me mentioned. We heard that loud and clear. This was originally slated to be R2A, and we have now upped that zoning to straight R2 for this section and are willing to commit to developing it at those standards. The next slide shows you the Doortie property. This is approximately 60.33 acres and stretches over to 125. The, again, with this piece, originally it was R3. This is the area that is slated for the Destination Series, which is the 55 and older targeted community. The City Council has already, Common Council has already approved a similar development by Arbor over on Combs Road called the Retreat. That is also the 55 and older targeted, same type of product, and that went through as R3. So that's why we originally slated this piece to be the same. But again, getting the feedback from the Plan Commission, we are upping this zoning to R2A. So now the, the Silverthorn side, the side on Honey Creek Road will be R2, and this side will be R2A. Concept plan is here in front of you. This kind of puts those two pieces together. The Christian piece is on your left. To the left of the large, there's a large tree line in the dark black going, splitting this property north to south. That tree line is going to be preserved as common area to kind of demarcate the differences between the two neighborhoods with one connecting road in the middle, or at the top, rather, to connect the two. That connecting road is right by the proposed pool and pool house that will be available for both sides of the community, but it will be located in the, in the Silverthorn side. You can also see in the upper right, another large dark area. That's a, an area that's going to be preserved with trees for common area. There will be a path coming down out of that area and going around the large pond in the middle along another tree line that goes east-west, which also will be preserved for that trail and common area. The trail then leads all the way over and over to the, the pool house. So this is the overall plan. I want you to look, if you would, at the Honey Creek side for, for a minute, just to explain what's going on there. Back when Lennar was putting their plan on the table, they had multiple lots backing up to Honey Creek, and that was an issue for the remonstrators at that time, talking about the character of Honey Creek Road. So when Arbor came to the drawing board here, they really took great care. Along that section, there is only one house, pie-shaped lot that actually backs directly up to Honey Creek. Two other pie-shaped lots on that cul-de-sac will be hitting it.
Mr. Prime, we've lost your video, or audio. Mr. Prime, we can't hear you.
Mike, I have a, a telephone number for his mobile. Do you want me to try it?
Um, yeah, go ahead. He's back now, I think.
There we go.
There we are.
About that, had technical difficulties. So switching to the, the next slide, we've got the, a closer view of, I'm still showing the concept plan. I'm not sure Mike's doing that. Okay, we've got the, a closer view of the eastern side. This just gives you a little bit easier to read, the way of looking at those lots. So at any rate, Ben, I want to move on to the statutory criteria. We've got the five statutory criteria that we need to run through for the record. So I will talk about those very quickly. The first is the comprehensive plan. This request is consistent with the city of Greenwood's comprehensive plan, as the proposed residential use is located within an area of interest segment as identified by the plan accordingly. Additionally, the future land use preference for real estate is shown within the comprehensive plan as residential. The request complies with the intent of the plan by encouraging residential development in the area where the real estate is located. The, the next slide we can run to real quick. That shows you actually what I'm talking about. That is the, that orange area is, is the area of interest for future growth in, in the Greenwood comprehensive plan. And the slide after that, the yellow area is identified as area for single-family residential, which is where we are located. So we are absolutely four-square in keeping with the comprehensive plan. The next criteria is that the current conditions and character of the, the neighborhood won't be affected. There has been minimal development to date in the surrounding properties, but Timber Valley is a sizable residential neighborhood to the northeast on 125. Most of the current structures in the area are situated south of this real estate along Tracy Road with a few homesites scattered along Honey Creek as you go north, and then you get to the Stone Ridge subdivision that one of the prior speakers had discussed. Our intention to design and build quality homes in this area, it will be a great transition in terms of price point and use from Stone Ridge, working over to Timber, Timber Valley in terms of price point. We're in the middle of both of those substantially higher than Timber Valley and, and less than Stone Ridge. So this is the type of, of an infill use that is, is going to be good for the current conditions and character of the area. Most desirable use is the next criteria. Again, with Timber Valley located to the northeast and Stone Ridge located to the northwest, this current use and proposed use is in compliance with the comprehensive plan and yields the most desirable use, which plan and yields the most desirable use, which of course is single-family residential. Conservation of property values, we're going to have the homes on the Silverthorn side will average around 360,000. The homes in the Destination series will be about 260,000. That is in keeping with homes in the area. We'll run through the Silverthorn photos here real quick, just to give you an idea of what those will look like. These are some elevations of the exteriors, and then this gives you a shot of interiors. These interiors will be similar with the Destination series as well, because most of those folks are picking the types of finishes you see here, wood flooring, granite countertops, stainless steel appliances, that type of thing. So these are the, the Silverthorn homes in particular, but again, the interiors will look pretty similar in the Destination series. The next slide that you get to is the pricing for the Silverthorn in, in the 360 range. Somebody was talking about quality or concerns about what this was going to do to the pricing in the area. This is from my board. A $360,000 house is higher than 96% of all of the homes sold and closed between July 1, 2019, and June 30, 2020 in Clark and Pleasant Townships. So we are at the top of the market for what is being sold in that area and think that that, that product fits in perfectly with what the city was envisioning in terms of future single-family development. The next slide shows some exteriors of the Destination series. These are the empty nester homes that will be going on the east side. They will all be ranches. A vast majority of them, even though vinyl will be permitted in that section, a vast majority of them, not a vast majority, quite a few of them will have full brick wrap. It's about 50% of the homes in there will have full brick wrap because of the city's architectural requirements that talk about any homes that have bought a thoroughfare or common area that have to have full brick wrap and with a ranch that will, that will put them in that area. So it will minimize the amount of vinyl in there, but the vinyl will be of keeping with the city's requirements in terms of gauge and quality, and that is done with an eye toward low maintenance, which the folks that are buying those homes want. They don't want to repaint every five years. So with regard to the Destination series pricing, even at 260, a $260,000 house in Clark and Pleasant Townships would put it in the 82nd percentile of homes closed between July 1 of last year and June 30th of this year. So again, we are at the top of the market for what is to be found. The next slide just reinforces that. This is a two-year look back of all home sales in a one and a half mile radius from this property. The average sale price was $215,833, and that includes homes in Center Grove, Greenwood, and Clark Pleasant School Districts. So 215 was the average sale price. Our Destination average will be 260. Our Silverthorn will be 360. This slide shows you the median income of the Indy Metro area, $58,000. A typical rule of thumb for home price, homeownership is, is three times that. And if you look at the table, we are going to be hitting the sweet spot for home demand and home market with our 260 and 360. We're in those areas where you've got 22% of Greenwood's population, 17% of Greenwood's population, and 15% of Greenwood's population in those demographics in terms of household income. So we will hit a big chunk of, of the home buying public in Greenwood. The problem is, when you talk about estate lots and make those kind of comments, if you push yourself into that next range, that highest range, only 8% of people in Greenwood can afford homes in their half million dollar and up range. So it substantially limits what you're doing. So let's talk real quick about why this subdivision here, why it makes sense, and why all the people arguing that this should be reserved for estate or custom homes just don't have the facts behind them. Here is, on this slide shows you all of the custom home permits pulled. Every single one of these subdivisions are actually over in Center Grove. And even then, the 2019 building permits, Aberdeen had three, Calvert Farms had six, Kensington Grove had five, Carrington Proper had four. There, there just isn't a heavy market for custom homes right now, at least in this general area. And just to lend a little more credence to this, the next slide is Stone Ridge subdivision. It was platted in 1998. There are only 10 lots. It took a full 10 years, a decade, for Stone Ridge to build out. If you look at the table at the bottom, that shows you lot sales by year. So between 1999 and 2009, it took that entire time for Stone Ridge to build out. There just isn't an appetite, and that's in Center Grove. So again, we're talking about across the street being in Clark Pleasant school systems. Let's take a look at a custom home subdivision in Clark Pleasant and what it, what that build out looked like. Brennimer Ridge, or sometimes it's called Brennimer's Ridge, it's actually listed like that in the plat, so we went with the apostrophe S. That was platted in 1990, 1987. And from 1987 to 1993 years, they sold zero lots. This is in Clark Pleasant schools. This is a custom home subdivision. It took Brennimer's Ridge through 2020 to sell out to where they, they only have still two lots available. So there just was not an absorption rate. There wasn't a market for custom homes. And there's, are still, with Brennimer Ridge, 94 acres that were intended for future sections that had never been platted because there was no demand. So I think the issue we have here is, in that area, all of the statistics show there is no demand for custom homes. There will be therefore no lending, no banks are interested in giving anybody money for that, and that's why you have Lennar and you have Arbor coming to the table, because they have a product that they can build, they can underwrite, they can do the development. And it is in the price points that are at the 92nd and 82nd, or whatever those numbers were, at the very top of the market for what the market is going to be quality homes. I thought I heard a question. At any rate, I want to finish up. I've taken a lot of your time. I appreciate you bearing with me and, and letting me tell you this. What I want to show you now are the commitments that Arbor is willing to enter into. These are written commitments that will be recorded. They will be required to adhere to them. A, the real estate should be platted and developed in substantially similar manner to the concept plan that you saw earlier, submitted this evening. B, the maximum number of lots to be developed would cap at 242. C, and that's down from the original plan, was in the 260s. The plant commission saw 247, I believe. We lost five more lots going from the plant commission to this plan when we went from R3 up to R2A for the Destination series. So 242 lots total. The western neighborhood containing 38.97 acres shall not permit vinyl siding as an allowable building material. That Silverthorn section will have hardy plank and brick and stone, but no vinyl. And then D, the real estate will be developed in all other respects to meet the city's architectural standards. That is a commitment that we will not be seeking any variances from those standards, and we will build to the city's agreed standards. So thank you very much for your attention. I know that this received an unfavorable recommendation from the plant commission, but we have reacted to that, I think in a fantastic way, by upping the zoning to R2 and R2A, reducing the lot count and allowing for a, a really, really good plan to come before you. And this will be in keeping with Greenwood's comprehensive plan, and, and we ask that you give it a favorable vote.
All right, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak at this public hearing?
Do, do the remonstrators have an opportunity to respond to Mr. Prime?
If you have something to say, yes, go right ahead.
Okay, thank you. In the materials, this is Linda Sargent.
Okay, thank you.
Linda Sargent again, and in the materials I sent to you, I outlined the five criteria as well that Mr. Prime covered regarding the comprehensive plan. And in the first one, I noted that according to the zoning map, that the single-family residents, they're, they're all on R1, not R2, not R2A. That's the zoning that is already there, and all we're doing is asking you to stay consistent with the zoning. The current structures, which is criteria number two, in order to maintain the current, the characteristic of the current structures, Arbor's Arbor Homes Plan project do not maintain those, the character of the current structures as set forth. The homes that are there, that most, they sit on at least one acre. They're all brick. They're all professionally landscaped, and they have additional amenities. For number three, Arbor Homes project is not the highest and best use of this prime real estate that is some of the last that is available for Greenwood to annex and develop. And in the comprehensive plan as of 2007, it was voted in and established that Greenwood was going to request new development that would meet relatively higher design standards. Arbor Home has proposed the same standards that we have seen all along, particularly on County Road or 125, which what we were told would be all vinyl. Greenwood does not need more vinyl homes. They do not pay for themselves, and they put a drain on the resources of the city of Greenwood. And the pictures that have been presented to the city council, there's no guarantee that that's actually how this is going to look. If the home, if Arbor Homes is not able to sell these homes, then they can always change what is offered. They can always downgrade and offer less. As far as the average price, and there's no demand, and I would suggest to the council that if there is no demand for these custom-built homes, it's because right now there is no place in Greenwood that is developed that can offer them. People are going to Carmel, or they're going to Center Grove, because Greenwood has not provided the opportunity for a project for custom homes. We are asking Greenwood to not settle for this, but to demand something better. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? All right, I want to give everyone plenty of opportunity, so we'll wait just a moment.
I guess I'd, I'd like to briefly address a couple of those comments, if I may. First of all, by changing the zoning to R2 and R2A, we're in compliance with the staff's recommendation, and we believe that those are the zoning classifications that best fit this area as it transitions over to the, the lower-priced, more dense homes in Timber Valley. This is a, this is a perfect transition. It's in the middle ground. It's right where it needs to be in terms of price point, in terms of lot size. What we're talking about here really is free market. As the Doorty said when they came on at the beginning, the market is telling us what goes here, right? It's, it's all well and good to say, we would love for this to be a certain thing, or we need more custom homes in Greenwood. That may be true, but not for this area. There has not been any movement in the three or four years that Doortys have had this ground on the market. They told you, they've gotten zero offers from custom home builders, from custom home developers. That market is not there for Clark Pleasant schools right now. Maybe it will be in the future, but it just isn't there right now. And I showed you Brennimer Ridge was Exhibit A of something taking 40 years to not even fully develop out. That's why when banks and lenders see that, when developers see that, there's never going to be any kind of a push to put that type of development there. There won't be any lending for it. It'll, it'll be impossible. And if you turn these types of developments down, you're basically telling the Christians and the Doortys, you can't sell your ground, because there is no other market. And I would hope that the council would accept that free market argument, because that's what it is. The market is telling us what works there. They've done their demographic studies, they've done their market studies, they are confident that these homes will sell and bring a different type of product, especially the empty nester product, to that area. Yeah, again, we're in the, we are in the 92nd and 82nd, 95th and 82nd percentile of home prices. So we are absolutely at the top of the market, and it's specious for people to argue that these are low-quality or low-number homes. They're, they're just not. That's not what the market is. So again, we, we think this is a quality project, and we know it's a quality project. We think it fits perfectly with what the city is looking for in that area in terms of single-family home development. The empty nest product will be great with low impact on the schools and, and bring in extra assessed value. It'll also help with the traffic concerns that some of those remonstrators mentioned, because 55 and older folks follow a different, different traffic pattern. They're not out at 9 and back in at 5. So we would ask for a favorable vote this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, hearing none, then the public meeting is closed.
I'm, I'm ready to speak.
All right. I'm sorry?
This is Roger Miller. I live at 1272 Stone Ridge Court. My wife and I, Kim, built a home on that lot 17 years ago for about $1.3 million. We've got it on the market for sale. If it were in Carmel, it would be sold. Problem is that we are being surrounded by a lot of low-priced homes. The market is being created by builders who are building these products. It is difficult to think about giving away a home, but I wish we would have 17 years ago went with the visionaries in Carmel, where you can build a house of this value and sell it at a reasonable price. Where are the visionaries in Greenwood? Thank you.
All right. Anybody else wishing to speak at this point? All right, going once, twice. The public hearing is closed. So council, any discussion among the council? Or any questions for Mr. Prime at this point?
This is Dave Lexi. What's the rush? What's the rush to sell the last remaining inventory in Greenwood to somebody who will build tomorrow? Are we that hard up that we need their real estate taxes next year? Because if we aren't, that's sad. So what's the rush? And what should we tell people who want to come here and relocate their business? That they have to move to Center Grove? That they move, they have to move to Carmel if you're an executive? Or should we be able to tell them that they have some executive real estate left here in Greenwood? So what's the rush? I know nobody is knocking on the door to build low-priced homes here tomorrow, but what's the rush to let these guys be the first ones? That is my point. We already have existing zoning. We already have a comprehensive plan. We are being asked to modify it and change it, and I ask why? What's the upside? What's the rush? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions on the council?
Yes, Mr. President, I have a question for Mr. Prime. According to the commitments, they were saying it's capped at 242, but when he and I talked on Friday, I thought we were at 272. So what are the number of lots per area?
It's 242. That is the cap. If you go back and look at the, the concept plan, it shows that number of lots. There are 78 in the Silverthorn side and, hang on one second, let me get back to that. And 163 on the Destination side.
All right, any other questions?
I have one more thought to share, Mr. President. I've talked with some in construction, and I understand that the hardy plank is not maintenance-free, that I feel like that when you go through newer developments all over the state, that there's a lot of hardy plank being used. I think it adds character to the homes, and I know that there is an additional amount that to me is well worth the amount. that to me is well worth the amount.
All right. Any other comments or questions on the council?
This was turned down by the Greenwood Plan Commission, 7 to 2, and the petitioner tweaked it. I understand they tweaked it, but what's been done to revise the traffic patterns in this area? Is the city engineer here on hand? What's been done to improve the roads? Traffic is a big concern. Is the city engineer here on hand to tell us what's going to handle the increased traffic?
Mr. Lexi, I can tell you at least north of here at the offset intersection of Stones Crossing in Honey Creek, there will be a roundabout that is a part of the east-west corridor that'll be coming through there. So that whole area will be expanded significantly to handle traffic going east and west. And Honey Creek was just upgraded going north-south.
When the roundabout was planned and designed and implemented, was this subdivision contemplated?
You'd have to talk to your engineers. I'm sure this wasn't on the books then, but this area is earmarked for future single-family development. So I would assume they would have taken into consideration the fact that all of this empty ground down there will be at some point, single-family homes. That's what's in the comprehensive plan. So that information was certainly available to them when that planning was done.
But your density is higher than what's called for in the comprehensive plan, right?
I'm sorry?
Your density is higher than what's called for in the comprehensive plan?
No, the plan doesn't speak specifically to zoning classifications. The density is in keeping with R2 and R2A, which are already on your books as permitted areas, as permitted zoning classifications.
Thank you.
Right, any other comments or questions? All right, hearing none. Then roll call on ordinance number 2018, first reading.
Dine. Gibson.
Yay.
Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Nay.
Lexi.
Nay.
Pendleton.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Bates.
Nay.
Campbell.
Aye. Ordinance 2018 fails to pass first reading of a vote of 4 to 5. Ordinance 2019.
An ordinance annexing certain territory continues to the city of Greenwood, Indiana, placing it within the corporate boundaries and making it a part of the city of Greenwood and redefining the corporate boundaries of the city of Greenwood, Indiana, to a pool of approximately 62 acres located north of Tracy Road between Honey Creek Road and County Road 125 West, formerly known as the Doortie Property Administration.
Do I have a motion?
No move.
Most of them, Mr. Dine, was that you?
Yeah, but you give somebody else credit if you want.
Well, no, that's okay.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hopper. This is scheduled for a public hearing, so we will open up for a public hearing on ordinance 2019. If you wish to speak for or against ordinance 2019, this is your opportunity. Speak up, state your name and address for the record. However, since this is really a sister ordinance to ordinance 2018, all the information that we've been given and arguments that have been made would apply to 2019. So you're welcome to repeat those, but I would ask that if you speak, only if you have something new to say on this one. But Mr. Prime, you're welcome to speak, obviously, as well, so.
Mr. Prime, I do, sorry to interrupt, have a clarification. Is this particular petition, is this the one that you amended so that you changed the zoning request from R3 to R2A?
That's correct.
Oh, I would need a motion so that we can have it corrected in the actual ordinance. I need a motion to amend ordinance 2019 to change the requested zoning classification from R3, single-family, to R2A, single-family.
And we do that during the public hearing or should we wait till the public hearing's over?
Well, you do have like a motion on the floor, just so it's correct and accurate.
Okay.
And address it.
All right, I'll take a motion to amend ordinance... Motion, Mr. Hopper, second by Mr. Dine. Any discussion on the motion to amend ordinance 2019? Seeing none, then roll call on amendment to ordinance 2019.
Gibson.
Nay.
Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Nay.
Pendleton.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Bates.
Nay.
Campbell.
Aye.
Dine.
Nay.
Ordinance 2019 is amended on a vote of 5 to 4. All right, anybody wishing to speak concerning this ordinance?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is Linda Sargent again, and I just want to put it on the record that we incorporate all of our prior statements made on the previous ordinance into this one and as at the record reflect that.
All right, thank you very much. Anybody else?
And I guess for the record, I'll just put that similar statement out there that everything that we presented in terms of ordinance 20-18 would apply to 2019 as well. 2019 being the Doortie property that would contain the Destination Series empty nest product.
All right, thank you, Mr. Prime. Anyone else? Hearing none, then we'll close the public hearing on ordinance 2019. Any discussion on the council?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Retail real estate prices in Indiana are at an all-time high, residential real estate prices. If the petition cannot make money in our city with prices this high, there's some internal problems there. I challenge them to tell us why we need to change our rules to accommodate them. Greenwood's a good place to build and they can make plenty of money here building high-priced
I guess I should respond to that. I'm a little confused by the question because we're not seeking any change to the rules. We're playing by the rules that are there.
Then why are you before this council?
Because this property's not in the city and it needs to be annexed in order for the city to apply a zoning classification to it and provide services to the folks that would be living there.
Well, then what about the people who live in Johnson County? Why can't you apply there?
They could, but it's a sewer service issue. There are other utility services that the city is much more capable of handling compared to the county.
And Mr. Alexey, I really think that we would be better off if it were under Greenwood's jurisdiction as an annexation than it to be in the county.
Yep. All right, any other comments, questions from the council?
Mr. President, I have a question. Just want to make sure that I'm understanding, but is that area not currently zoned R2 in the county?
I'm not sure what the county zoning is.
It is. It's R2 and then there's a small part of the Doortie parcel that's A1, but the majority of the, all of the Christian parcels are R2 and the majority of the Doortie properties are too.
Okay, so you're not trying to significantly change the zoning of the existing land from what's already there, correct?
Correct. I mean, there's some differences between your R2 and their R2. Yeah. It's basically, we're trying to bring in a density that is in keeping with what the comprehensive plan calls for.
Thank you very much for confirming that.
Right, any other questions or comments from the council?
I, this is Mr. Hopper, sorry. You make a compelling argument, Mr. Prime. You know, for me, still, even though it fits within our zoning, a little too dense, especially on the eastern portion, on the empty nester side. And, you know, I still hold out that I am not a fan of vinyl, so any chance I can get to get rid of it, I will. But your argument showing that there is almost zero appetite for executive housing, even in the Center Grove area, which was surprising to me, almost gets me there. So just wanted to say that I think you did a really good job presenting this project.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hopper.
Mr. President, I'd just like to speak. This is regarding the former property that I feel like that... And I know that this is what our modified ones are for eight sides at that. But to me, that is, that's one of the things that comes up on the news bar, was the tightness in the density. And just because that's the matter, that's what we have to do. Those homes, I know people don't want large lots, but I would be much more comfortable with those lots in the Destination side.
All right, thank you, Ms. Gibson. Anybody else? Other comments from the council, questions? All right, hearing none, then roll call, ordinance 2019, first reading.
Hill.
Aye.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear your response.
It would probably help if I unmuted myself, wouldn't it? It's a nay, sorry.
Lexi.
Nay.
Pendleton.
Aye.
Williams. Williams.
Aye.
I'm sorry. Bates.
Nay.
Campbell.
Aye.
Dine.
Nay.
Gibson.
Yay.
Ordinance 2019 fails to pass first reading of a vote of 4 to 5. Resolution 2017, thank you, Mr. Prime and all the people who spoke, appreciate your input. Resolution 2017.
A resolution approving the adoption of the city of Greenwood, Indiana's Amortis Disability Act update and planning sponsored by Hopper, Campbell, Bates, and Gibson.
I have a motion.
No move.
Motion by Mr. Bates, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Dine. Any discussion on the council? None, then roll call, resolution 2017.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Pendleton.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Bates.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Dine.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Resolution 2017 passes first reading 9 to 0. Resolution 2019.
A resolution of the Greenwood Common Council authorizing the filing of an application for the acceptance of and implementation of an Edward Byrne Justice Assistance Grant in the amount of $22,721 with the U.S. Department of Justice and related matters funded for purchase of...
Do I have a motion?
No move.
Motion by Mr. Bates, second by Mr. Dine. Any discussion?
I do have, I think there is a typographical error in the caption. The actual amount of the funds are $27,911. So I would like a motion to correct the amount of the grant to $27,911 in the caption.
Do I have a motion to amend? Motion, Mr. Bates, second by Mr. Hopper. Any discussion on a motion to amend the resolution 2019? Seeing none, roll call on the motion to amend the resolution 2019.
Lexi.
Aye.
Pendleton.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Bates.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Dine.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
David left the meeting.
No, I'm still here. Which David? This David is still here.
Okay. All right, then I think you vote...
I vote yes.
Yes, all right. Resolution 2019 is amended, a vote of 9 to 0. Any further discussion on resolution 2019 as amended? Hearing none, then roll call, resolution 2019, first reading as amended.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear your response.
Aye.
William.
Aye.
Bates.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Dine.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Resolution 2019 is amended, is approved, first reading 9 to 0. Passes first reading. Resolution 2020.
A resolution of the Greenwood Common Council approving an interlocal agreement between the city of Greenwood, city of Franklin, and Johnson County regarding allocation of the 2020 Byrne Justice Assistance Grant and related matters sponsored by Dine.
Do I have a motion? Mr. Bates, second by Mr. Dine. Any discussion? Hearing none, then roll call, resolution 2020, first reading.
Williams.
Aye.
Bates.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Dine.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Pendleton.
Aye.
Resolution 2020 passes first reading 9 to 0. Second reading, resolution 2016.
A resolution declaring certain real property improvements for tax abatement. Cedric Properties LLC, sponsored by Hopper and Campbell.
Do I have a motion?
No move.
Motion, Mr. Hopper, second.
Second.
I got my Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. Dine, was that you?
Yes.
All right. Any discussion? Resolution 2016. I think Mr. Sherman was here at least to answer any questions you might have. Hearing no discussion, then roll call on resolution 2016, second reading.
Bates.
Nay.
Campbell.
Aye.
Dine.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Pendleton.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Resolution 2016 passes second reading 8 to 1. New business, introduction of new ordinances and resolutions, ordinance 2020.
An ordinance amending the 2020 Salary Ordinance, Common Council Ordinance, number 1928, as the position of deferral coordinator, paralegal trainee to the legal department, sponsored by Bates and Gibson. I can explain this one. Our current paralegal and deferral coordinator, Diana Downey, is retiring and her last day will be September 30th. We are trying to replace her, hire the person who will take her place and bring them on timely so that she can train them prior to her departure in September. So we've requested, a request for a suspension of rules so we can get that done and get that person trained as soon as possible.
All right, we have a request for suspension of the rules through first reading. Do I have a motion?
No move.
Motion, Mr. Bates, second by Mr. Dine, I think. Any discussion on suspension? Hearing none, then roll call, suspension of the rules, resolution 2020 through first reading.
Campbell.
Aye.
Dine.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Pendleton.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Resolution or ordinance 2020, the rules are suspended through first reading, voted 9 to 0. Do I have a motion on first reading?
No move.
Motion by Ms. Gibson, second.
Second.
And Mr. Dine. Any discussion? Hearing none, then roll call, excuse me, ordinance 2020, first reading.
Dine.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Pendleton.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Bates.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Rules are suspended through second reading. Do I have a motion for second reading?
No move.
Motion by Ms. Gibson, second by Mr. Hopper. Any discussion on... Any discussion on suspension through second reading? Was that you, Mr. Williams? You know, it's...
I'll take it, it's fine.
All right.
Go for it.
Okay, any discussion? Seeing none, and roll call, suspension of the rules, ordinance 2020 through second reading.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye. Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Pendleton.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Bates.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Dine.
Aye.
Rules are suspended on ordinance 2020 through second reading. Do I have a motion on second reading?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Gibson, second by Mr. Dine. Any discussion? The suspension of the rules through second reading was voted nine to zero. Any discussion on ordinance 2020? Hearing none, then roll call, ordinance 2020, second reading.
Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi. Pendleton.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Bates.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Dine.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
I'm going to assume Mr. Lexi voted yes, so ordinance 2020 passes second reading nine to zero.
I think you're going to have to abstain him. He's not even in the screen anymore. Yeah.
Lexi had to get more sunscreen.
Yeah, I see him down by the beach, if you look far enough.
Okay, well, we will...
Thank you very much for that. Thank you.
All right, ordinance 2021.
An ordinance vacating flooded drainage and utility easement in common area located in block eight, President's South Business Center, section five, sponsored by Dine.
All right, anybody want to speak to this?
I can. The request is there's a drainage easement on the southern half of an industrial parcel. This parcel is located on the south side of Main Street, immediately adjacent to Auto's pavement marking and Homecoming. This drainage is going to be relocated to a different place on the site, but it's not in a desirable place as it was previously flooded. So procedurally, it must become, must come before council.
All right, thanks. All right, any questions for Mr. Davis? All right, moving on, miscellaneous business. This is an opportunity, we give members of the audience to address the council concerning items that are not on the agenda. So if you'd like to do so, please speak up, state your name and address for the record. There is a five-minute time limit for individuals, twenty minutes for a group. Anyone? All right, hearing none, moving on, anything from the council? I believe earlier today, Mr. Lexi posted it on Facebook, but Duke Energy, I believe, sent an email out. You all may have received it, I don't know, about their customer assistance program during the COVID-19. If any of you haven't, have not received that information, let me know. I will send it to you. But in case any of your constituents ask, Duke Energy is working with their customers during this time on their energy bills, so. Anything else from the council?
Yes, Mr. President, along that same line, I just wanted to make my fellow council members aware that the social is going to have, the food pantry part of the social is going to have a distribution a week from tomorrow from 5:30 to 7:30, and it will be a box of canned goods and food that could be carried to family at four to six. And there's a lot of people that are really struggling, and we're not announcing this on the media because we do have, I think, cooking boxes that will be distributing, and it will be just a drive-through there at the scene.
All right, thank you, Ms. Gibson. Anybody else from the council? All right, are the miscellaneous business corporation council?
None.
Controller? Mayor's office?
I have nothing.
All right. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Appreciate your input tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good week.